It's further designed, so.
It's a perfect spot.
What's the billboard?
And I think, well, it's already.
Health, health.
It's far away.
I'm hungry now, I'm really tired.
Yeah, that's for the thing.
We're getting along. There we're proposing. If we need improvement because of the project.
Yeah.
Correct? That's a good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think.
And then a few little.
I think there's one here the, like, where the.
Yeah, we, uh, like the back one, ours did, yes.
So that means this port's fine.
The port's fine.
And the wirework.
The wirework.
Okay.
Where's projecting, Dan? We know the next one.
I don't think he uses projecting, I think it's just a second string. It's an extended display.
Yeah, it's extended display.
It would be duplicate or extended, but it only shows, uh, setting for.
Yeah.
They mean.
It only shows stuff for when, uh, uh, it detects another one, and that's when you can choose.
So it's not detected.
Has everything else?
It's gotta be a driver, right? It's gotta be a display driver, graphics.
Could be a driver.
Maybe it's an HP. Gary has it, there's another HP here, this one does it, this one does it too. It tells me nothing.
Yeah.
How do you get across?
And you can't see, maybe it's the sixty, maybe drop it to a thirty, but it requires a system reset.
Oh, can't do it. Can't even do it, internal display.
Guys, this is looking like a no go.
Yeah, I think.
Can you put it up there?
In the back?
Yeah, you could.
And I could have someone in the back going through slides while you speak.
Well, you could, or you could just go straight into that, too.
Into that one?
We don't have another, how about the other rooms? Do they have a laptop we could steal?
I can go.
And that, is that remote TV, too?
Oh, true.
Yeah, could real that. It'd be nice if they wouldn't have to. Looking sideways only.
They have a, they have a TV on the wheel, touchscreen. What if we're gonna?
I'll update you. Hi, everybody, I apologize for the delay. We have a technical difficulty, we're having a problem getting our presentation in the laptop. It's going on the screen here, but we think we're either gonna bring in another TV to put it either right here, and put the presentation on the television, or hopefully not, but we may end up having to. Now, let's see what comes through the store. But we're working on it, sorry for the delay. We'll get rolling as soon as we get the.
Yeah, is also a sign in sheet and handouts in the front if anybody didn't sign in and, uh, wants a handout.
The, the guys have tried everything, that's what I was just looking at, it says input B.
Be any other inputs?
So, there are. Let's see if, uh.
Um, I don't know.
You try and shut. No, I will in one minute. Yeah, we have some laptops, can't. Hit, uh, enter when you hit those.
Yeah, I was just trying to do it, and it's not going up.
There we go, look at this. Looks here, our crew is here. Yeah, they did.
They did? On your laptop, you have it on?
You do not, but there's a mechanism that we have that can potentially get us there.
But I tried my laptop and it worked. It's not the last.
It's weird. Hang on, laptop?
That's my laptop, yeah.
Just bang it over here. Hammer? Try banging it with a hammer?
That's usually what happens with the old cars, eh?
Kick it or hit it with your foot.
The screen's gonna be tricky. I should lose the picture.
Oh, I know, I remember that, yeah.
Whoa, whoa, back here.
Okay, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Hi, Asher.
There you go.
Wouldn't be the first time, we didn't have one that had a bad.
You don't have a flash drive or anything, do you? Can we, like, plug a flash drive in?
No, we don't have.
Will flash drive, would it do that?
But we don't have a presentation on a flash drive.
Yeah, but we can transfer it. Should, should have it in the work.
Yeah, we could transfer it, right?
Yeah. Hey, I know that guy. So we'll have to put, Jamie, do we got a transfer? Hey!
I'd just like to have you all applaud Daniel's efforts here, he worked very hard to make this happen. We are up and running.
Somebody's gonna control that, right?
Um.
George.
Yep.
All right, well. Fine, okay, I'd just like to introduce myself, my name is Tom Courier, I am with Mast dot, I'm the Mast dot project manager. And tonight we're talking about.
Could you use a microphone?
Oh, okay, so, yeah, very good, sorry. Start over. Hi, oh, that's much better, yeah. My name is Tom Courier, I work for Mast dot, I'm a Mast dot project manager, and, uh, tonight we're here to talk about Dartmouth corridor improvements on Route Six from Font's Corner Road to Hathaway Road project. And as Jamie will explain in a few minutes, I know this project's been in the works for a long time, you've been very patient about it. Uh, but it's moving forward now, just like our presentation, and, uh, I just wanna go through a few preliminaries, uh, currently we're looking at advertising this project for construction in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, probably, uh, late fall twenty twenty-four, our fiscal year begins in September, uh, and runs through August, uh, runs through September thirtieth. So, anyway, uh, we're looking to advertise the project for construction at late fiscal, late twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. Uh, currently it's estimated to cost about ten point five million, uh, and that's federal money, it's congestion mitigation air quality funds that the federal government provides us, I think that's a ninety, ten, or eighty?
Eighty twenty.
Eighty twenty split, so eighty percent of the cost of the project would be paid for with federal funds and twenty with Mast dot funds, state funds. Uh, with me tonight is the designer of the project, Jamie Pizano from Vanoss Hagen and Brussels Inc., and Bob Clinton of VHB, he's our traffic expert, and, uh, with me from Mast dot is Pamela Hasner, the project development engineer in District Five in Taunton, Mass, and our right-of-way representative, Teresa Canus, also working out of District Five in Taunton. Uh, your town engineer, Tim Barber's here, and I believe your town administrator is here as well. Sean, I've forgotten your last name already.
Mike Guinness.
You all know him anyway, but, uh, thank you, Sean, for being here. Uh, we think this is a good, a good project, uh, Jamie's done a terrific job, um, without further ado, I'm gonna turn this over to him, so he can begin the presentation, and, and what he's gonna do with his slide presentation is he and Bob will explain the technical aspects of the design. And, uh, after that, we'll be here as long as you'd like us to be to answer all your questions. Thank you very much. All right, Jamie.
Great, thank you very much. Again, my name is Jamie Pizano, I'm with VHB, and I'm the project manager. Just getting into it, just a quick little agenda, we'll talk about how the project initiated, the goals, talk about some of the alternatives, excuse me, just to give you the history of how we got to this point, we'll then discuss the preferred alternative, uh, then Teresa will mention some of the right-of-way, um, sort of the, how that process will go, we'll touch on environmental permitting, talk about some traffic control, and then get into next steps and questions, excuse me. So just a brief timeline, because again, everybody's been waiting to see this project for a while. Um, how did we get here, back in April of two thousand fourteen, we had a preliminary, uh, twenty-five percent design submission. Um, with that, Mast DOT reviewed it, there's some elements that I'll get into it in terms of that twenty-five percent later on in the presentation. From there, back in two thousand eighteen, we get, went together with Mast DOT and did some more alternatives to try to solve some of the problems that we had with our first twenty-five percent. We submitted a revised twenty-five percent in twenty twenty-one. As the project rolled in, the bridge that spans over the Pascomansett River is now being evaluated from that preliminary structures report. We will be replacing that bridge as a part of this project, so again, that happened back in twenty twenty-two, and then we, basically what brings us tonight to twenty twenty-three for our design public hearing, looking for any input that you might have, which would be wonderful, so that we can proceed with this project. So the first part, just to give you a quick little history in terms of why this project was initiated, again, it started with a corridor study that was done for Font's Corner and Route Six by Serpent. In that report, basically they evaluated the Font's Corner Road piece from Old Fall River Road all the way down to Route Six, and also incorporated a portion of Route Six over to Hathaway Road. The improvements that they recommended was the interchange with I nine, one ninety-five, some improvements on Font's Corner Mall Road and the intersection of Route Six, those two projects have been completed by Mast DOT and the town. The next phase is what you're looking at here, in terms of state road from Font's Corner Mall Road over to Hathaway Road. As a part of that, the recommendation was to relocate Tucker Road, again, we'll get into that in just a few more minutes. So overall, this goal of this project was to mitigate congestion and improve safety. And as a part of that, we get roadway improvements, we try to accommodate bikes and peds to the maximum extent practicable, and also improve some of the drainage along the roadway. So some of the alternatives that we considered, I'm gonna slide over to the next slide. Um, with that, this just gives you the existing conditions along state road today. So again, the project was initiated where we would relocate Tucker Road, as you can see on the map today, and as you're aware, living in town, state road running left to right on the screen, Tucker Road in the middle of the screen coming up from the bottom, Champion Terrace, far left, coming down from the top. Hathaway Road is on the far right from the top, coming diagonally into state road. The first alternative, again, was to relocate Tucker Road over to Hathaway Road and create a four-way intersection. With that, there'd be improvements along state road as well. With that piece of the puzzle, from environmental impacts and right-of-way costs, town and the state decided, let's reevaluate the project. With that, that's became the two thousand eighteen, when I said we looked into alternatives. As part of those alternatives, we maintained Tucker Road as it is, and then evaluated were there improvements along state road that could be done. With that study, we, again, we evaluated different pieces of the puzzle, so that how would traffic move through there and eliminate some of the congestion and improve safety elements. There was always a signal proposed at Hathaway Road, that, that's in the project now, it was always in the project when it was a four-legged intersection. We also, when you get into the, Bob will get into the preferred alternative, the design that we have doesn't preclude us going forward with the Tucker Road relocation in the future. And again, we can explain some of that as we get into it. Some of the improvements or alternatives that we looked at was, could we remove Champion Terrace from the, the intersection as it is, it's an offset intersection, as you can see on the screen here today, and as you're well aware, driving it, it is a little bit confusing as people approach from each direction in terms of Tucker and Champion Terrace. We also looked at it from the, could you remove Tucker Road from this intersection, and in doing that, it would almost be a U-turn, where you would take Tucker Road, go right, come up to the light at Hathaway and make a U-turn to go. Those were the different elements that we looked into, all the different alternatives, we tried to figure out the best approach to come up with the alternative that would give us the biggest bang for the buck in terms of mitigating congestion and improving safety. As we came up with the alternative that we talked about today, there's criteria that Mast DOT has, where we want to evaluate bikes and pedestrians and provide as much movement for them as well through the project area. With that, we looked at shared use paths and side paths in and around the project area, we also looked at separated bike lanes and buffered bike lanes. Again, each one evaluating it with different criteria. Um, in the preferred alternative, you'll see that we added a side path that runs along the roadway to accommodate bikes and pedestrians. With that, we're gonna jump into the preferred alternative, Bob, you wanna jump in now? Just hit that button, Bob, when you go forward.
Okay. Yeah, once again, my name's Bob Clinton, I'm also with VHB, uh, traffic engineer, uh, involved with the project from, uh, its inception, and, uh, you know, like Jamie said, you know, the ideal thing and the way to improve traffic, we were trying to get rid of that jog between Tucker Road and Hathaway, where you have to come up, turn, make a right turn and a left turn, no matter which direction you're coming, and that would be the ideal, uh, solution. But once, once it was determined that, uh, that that couldn't move forward at this time, uh, they wanted to get as much bang for their buck at, at this point, um, and try and, uh, resolve some of the issues. Um, let's start on the left side of the page, um, when you're coming down, uh, Font's Corner Road, um, when you make the dual left turn movement, there's a stacking issue between, um, Font's Corner Road and, and, uh, Tucker Road. Um, a lot of times, the, the, the signal's green, you have two, the, the green left turn arrows, and you have no place to go once you get around the corner. Um, one of the things that we're doing to improve that is by, let me move, point to this here. I don't know if you can see, can you, can see my cursor here moving around? What, what we've done is, we've moved, basically the stop line today is back in this location. We've added about a hundred feet of stacking on this approach, so you have two lanes with a hundred feet, as well as the right turn lane, sometimes the right turn lane spills back, and you can't, you, you can't get through because the right turn lane is blocking you, so, so what we've done here is increased the stacking. Um, uh, we've also, um, uh, eliminated, uh, you know, by, by moving that stop line up, it does two things, it increases the stacking and it also reduces the clearance time to get through the intersection. So when the stop bar is at a location where it is today, you have to have a long period of clearance time for vehicles that are stuck in the intersection to get through the intersection. So by tightening this up, you, it's a win-win, you, you increase stacking and you reduce the wasted time on, on the clearance interval. You also eliminate some confusion, you know, the confusion that Jamie talked about, when you have somebody coming out of Tucker Road making a left turn movement, and you have somebody from Champion Terrace trying to make that left turn movement, it's, it's like you're playing chicken, who's gonna, who's gonna, uh, blink first? So it eliminates that safety concern. Um, that, that movement, so the left turn movements, um, that occur today will take place at the new traffic signal on the next page at Hathaway, and they'll make U-turns at that location and be able to come, come back to Champion Terrace. Uh, vehicles coming out right turn only will be able to utilize the gaps created at, at the Tucker Road signal, and also the gaps created, um, when there, when there's a change in the phasing at the Hathaway, uh, intersection. Um, the other movements into Champion Terrace will remain, Tucker Road, you'll be able to come across and into Champion Terrace, and also heading westbound on Route Six, you'll be able to take a right turn in. Um, on the next page, you can see here, the fire station, they'll have access to be able to take lefts out of their driveway. Um, you also have the new signal shown here on Hathaway Road. Um, let me, one thing that I neglected to mention back here, the length of this left turn storage lane, it's gonna be significantly increased, um, so you'll be able to, to accommodate, you know, the queued cars, and you'll be able to get through here a lot easier. Um, one of the things I also neglected to mention, uh, the, the bridge replacement, the job is also gonna include, um, we're gonna keep the abutments where they are today, and we're gonna span that with the new bridge over, um, at this location. Um, again, this is the, this is the new signal, on, on the westbound approach, uh, we will be adding an additional lane. There'll be three, three through lanes, two through and the one shared through right turn lane, so you'll have more stacking at this location to get through the signal. The other thing that occurs today is this left turn bay. Because there isn't a signal here, uh, the queue, the queue extends back and blocks the through lane of traffic today. So these, these signals, all three of these signals will be coordinated, and what that means is, is they're not gonna be running randomly, so, so you're not gonna stop at one, stop at the next, stop at the third. Um, so there'll be, there'll be, uh, better progression along the corridor. Uh, we provided eleven-foot lanes, ten-foot turn lanes, four-foot shoulders, and, uh, these, uh, uh, we also have, uh, accommodations for bike, bikes and peds. Um, there's a ten-foot, uh, there's a ten, ten-foot side path that's going to accommodate bikes and peds on both sides of the roadway. Um, the north, north side of the right-of-way will be maintained, while there will be some, we'll, we'll be, uh, eliminating the median in here to make up some of that width, there'll be a barrier in the median, so as not to take up too much room and to maximize the available width here, and there'll be some minor takings along the, along the, uh, south side of the roadway. Um, the signal will be, like Jamie said, a four-way signal. The, the plaza will be incorporated into the signal and can be modified in the future if, if the relocation of, um, Tucker Road occurs. Um, I think that pretty much covers everything I wanted to touch on unless I forgot anything, and Jamie can cover that.
Oh. I'm sure we'll get to it, Bob.
I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah.
Thanks, nice job.
Thanks, Bob. He actually mentioned it, so as a part of the project now, the bridge over the Pascomansett River will be replaced. The intent is to maintain the abutments that are out there, it's basically the walls that support the bridge today, we will span over that, so that basically the opening will remain as is. That'll help from an environmental impact point of view. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Teresa, just to talk about right-of-way. Oop, I think you gotta come visit me.
Good evening, my name's Teresa Canus, and I am here representing the Right-of-Way Bureau at Mast dot. The Right-of-Way Bureau is responsible for acquiring all necessary rights in private and public land for the design, construction, and implementation of this project. Affected property owners will be contacted by personnel from the Right-of-Way Bureau and/or consultants representing Mast dot. The procedures used must comply with state and federal regulations governing the acquisition process. The current design plans indicate that some impacts may be required. Affected property owners' rights are protected under Massachusetts General Law's primarily Chapter Seventy-nine. If a project is receiving federal funds, the property owner's rights are further defined under Title Three of the Real Property Acts of nineteen seventy, as amended. I will be available to answer any general questions regarding the right-of-way process during the open forum, thank you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Excellent. So again, just wanna touch on, you know, basically environmental, cultural, resource, and community impacts on the project. Oop, and it's, it's very general at this point, again, with the bridge replacement, maintaining the abutments, we're minimizing any impacts to the environment. You also have the Pascomansett Landing, uh, it's a Conservation Commission-owned property, the little park, intent is not to impact that at all. Um, just to touch on what Teresa had mentioned, there are a lot of temporary easements that'll be required, you know, basically our design maintains the back of sidewalk on the north side of the road, with slight widening to the south side, so there'll be temporary easements, just to sort of blend your driveways in, different elements like that, and we can explain a little bit more afterwards, if anyone wants to look at the plans, we have brought them with us tonight. In terms of how you'll be impacted during construction, again, the intent is to maintain access to businesses and residences at all time. Uh, there will be closures during the day, during non-peak hours, to get some of the work done, and with the bridge replacement now, we'll be actually evaluating, is there any detours that could be rolled in to potentially expedite the work? So that hasn't been worked through on all of those elements just yet, but again, looking for feedback tonight, so that we can refine the design, and then we'll work on those elements as we go forward with the design. Some of the next steps, I don't know, Tom, if you want me to just keep rolling?
No, yeah, either way.
Whatever you'd like, sir. I'm easy.
So far, so good, right? Um, so we're doing our hearing tonight. Uh, Jamie's team has to design the bridge replacement, uh, we've got a lot of environmental permitting to, uh, finalize before we advertise for construction, we have to acquire all the right-of-way rights, uh, to build the project and get all the permitting in place before we're allowed to begin, and, uh, Jamie's team will advance the design along with that other stuff going on, the permitting and the right-of-way acquisition, and we're targeting, as I said, uh, late twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five to advertise. Either one will still arrive at a groundbreaking of, in the spring of twenty twenty-five, uh, because of the winter, you know, weather, although down here, I imagine you might get a longer fall and an earlier spring start, sometimes. Uh, but anyway, yeah, we're looking at a, uh, late twenty-four, early twenty-five advertisement for construction. We don't yet know how long it's gonna take, but I would guesstimate probably two and a half years, maybe, with the winter break, and, uh, Mast dot always guarantees that all the businesses will, will, will have access, customers will have access to all the abutting businesses during construction. It will require some coordination between the construction administration staff, Mast dot staff will administer the contract and be out here all the time, and work with the, uh, abutting businesses and, and residences to, uh, coordinate access to their property when they need it and still build the work. Uh, and I, I won't kid you, as you know, um, there will be some disruption, I mean, we will be tearing up the roadway. And so there will be some, uh, some disruption, but we're gonna try and minimize that, as we always do, and, um, that as we always do and get it done as quickly as possible. So you end up with a safer, better-operating roadway, a brand-new bridge. We'd hate to do Route 6, this section of Route 6, and not address the bridge, which is in tough shape. And there we have it. No more slides, right?
Just questions, I believe.
Oh, yeah. Now the most important part. Thank you all for signing in and grabbing handouts. On the last page of the handout is a space for you to write down any comments or questions you have. There was a printing error, and I've got to ask you to copy the chief engineer's address onto the back of it. You can fold it up, put a stamp on it, mail it in. It'll get to me, and we will get you a response to your question or comment. Or why we're here tonight is to hear everything you have to say, good, bad, or indifferent. We need to hear it from you to get a better project at the end. That's really important. And I think I've probably talked enough. I see a gentleman has his hand up. I just want to offer the...
Just a quick question on that. Is there an email address that we can use instead of the old names?
I believe there's a project management at dot.state.ma.us that will arrive on my desk. There it is, right there, yeah.
The bottom of the screen, everyone. The address, I can leave it up there.
Can we blow that up? How do I drag it over, Jamie? Oh, thank you. I don't know if you guys can read that. Hopefully, yes. Maybe not in the back, huh? I know I couldn't. Let me try making it bigger. How the hell are you doing it?
I stick my finger in it.
Oh, that's how you're doing it. Yeah, I'll get you.
You're getting carried away now, brother.
I know. You're off the map here. Oh, no, you're not. Yeah, you are. The gremlins have obviously attended tonight's meeting and given us a hard time here. So I understand we have some elected officials in the room. We generally traditionally like to ask them if they have anything they'd like to say before we get going with the whole Representative Markey, are you still here?
I am.
Hi.
I'd rather hear from everybody than...
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Administrator, do you have any comments you'd like to toss in?
Similar observance, Markey, I would hear.
Very good, yeah. Thank you very much. So my only ask is that you tell us who you are and spell your last name for the transcriptionist who's capturing a verbatim transcript. And so let's have it with a show of hands, and I'll call on people, and we'll stay as long as you'd like us to. That gentleman and then this lady. Yes, sir. Could you... One other ask. Would you mind standing up at the microphone? Yeah, thank you, sir.
I'm with Fire District 3. Obviously, we have that fire station at 254 State Road. And my question is, is there going to be signs in the project, permanent road signs depicting the fire station? There isn't any presently right now.
Whatever MUTCD dictates, that's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it controls all our signing and striping. If the signs need to be there, we'll put them there, yes.
Okay. And the second thing is, can you ensure that we'd have unimpeded access in...
Absolutely.
...to that building throughout construction?
Of course.
The building's not occupied?
Oh.
But it's an emergency on-call fire station?
Do you have firefighting equipment there?
Yes.
Oh, so you need to get in and out?
Yes.
You need to get in and out.
So there'll be on-call firefighters responding to that station throughout construction, day in, day out.
Okay.
So we just need to make sure that our roadway is unimpeded. We can get in and out.
We'll need to capture that in the specs, guys.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. That's the kind of thing we need to know. That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Yes, ma'am. If... I'm sorry to make you walk all the way over there. Appreciate it.
Nobody did, Tom.
Woo-hoo. Go Sox.
Hi, everybody. Hear me okay? My name is Susan, S-U-S-A-N, Pawlak, P-A-W-L-A-K hyphen, then S-E-A-M-A-N, like a sailor. That was a '70s thing to hyphenate like that, so. I'm a resident, and I live on Tucker Road, just off of Route 6. In fact, right near where the police department is on the other side. And I'm trying to wrap my brain around this movement of signals. I'm trying to envision where the lights will be and how close it'll be to the one at Hathaway Road. And I don't know, for some reason, I can't easily visualize it. So I was wondering if you could maybe even just...
You could throw that slide up, Jamie. We'll put that back up on the screen so we can address it. So that's Tucker there.
Right, so...
Hathaway's over there, right?
They're very close together, so.
Yeah.
I have a graphic, Tom. Can we just bring up the graphic?
Okay. We've got a better picture that shows them both on the page at the same time.
Okay, that would be good. Uh-oh.
I got it here. Just got to see.
He's got this.
Don't need Daniel yet.
Right. Where is Daniel? How far apart are they? Do you happen to know offhand, you know? Oh, there we go. Yeah, perfect. You know, damn, what the hell happened?
That's horrible.
Gremlins are bad.
It's the best design I've ever done. Sorry. You've got to be kidding me.
Daniel, are you there?
Hello.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for not throwing tomatoes at me.
Are you okay if I just duplicate?
Do what you've got to do.
Yeah, whatever you need to do.
Yeah. I've tortured these guys enough.
I wonder what happened. Oh, he sees your tabletop there, your desktop. There it is. Thank you. All right. Not going to step on any cords or anything. So I don't see any station in there. Can you tell us how far that is?
I've got plans.
The sections are where they are now.
Yeah, we're not moving.
Does that moving?
Same relative distance.
I'm trying to visualize where the actual signal light would be moved to compared to where it is now on Tucker.
Oh, the actual fixture? The thing, the pole?
You said 100, what, 100 feet?
Oh, well, yeah. Yeah, let me explain that a little bit.
Sorry, my brain is just not picking it up.
If you look at... Can you zoom this in?
So we are widening the roadway a bit. So the foundation for the signal heads will be a little further away from the roadway than it is today.
Okay.
It's probably at the back of sidewalk, right, Jamie?
Yeah, so the... Actually, Susan, the signal head will be directly across from Tucker.
Okay.
So it'll basically be facing right at you. It'll be a Mast dot.
Okay.
Okay.
With the signal looking right at you, and then there's a small one next to it. There'll be two heads facing you.
In the 100 feet that I was talking about, if you look at Champion Terrace at the top of the screen, the stop line on the eastbound approach is back in this range.
That's the existing condition.
The existing condition is back here.
They're not lined up, yeah.
Yeah, and so it's going to be moved up past Champion Terrace. It's going to be on the other side of Champion Terrace over here.
Closer to Tucker.
Yeah.
Okay. And my other question would just be, so if I'm coming off the Hathaway Road to go home, I'm still going to have that left lane to turn into off of there?
Yes. Yeah, the only movements that are being eliminated are the left, the eastbound left turn onto Champion Terrace that occurs today.
From Champion Terrace. You said two.
Well, this left is not going to be allowed, and this eastbound left turn is not going to be allowed, and the left turn and through out of Champion Terrace is not going to be allowed. Everything else is going to remain pretty much the same as it is today, but the lanes are going to, the storage lanes are going to be longer. And the addition is going to happen over here at Hathaway, this additional lane, additional westbound lane over here.
So that's not a dedicated left?
There's no left turn here, yeah.
So as far as Tucker's concerned, then, it's basically you still make your right turn.
Coming out of Tucker, you're going to be able to do exactly what you're doing today.
And the other question I have, and I don't want to take up too much time, but you did mention that there's a possibility down the road that the realignment could still be done.
So the reasoning, the reasoning that was eliminated, it just is really cost prohibitive, very expensive.
A lot of land taken, yeah.
The town would have had borne the expense of acquiring a building to move the road over where the building is. And it just wasn't possible.
Okay.
But in the future, if things change, that could happen.
Okay, thank you.
It wouldn't undo much that's been done with this project.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. If you could. Thank you. I just want to say I really appreciate your patience. You've been fantastic with us tonight. We apologize for all our delays and stuff.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Rocha, R-O-C-H-A. My property is at 16 Champion. My question, we just touched upon Champion. I thought we were only losing the access point, which is the left turn going from Fons Corner down Route 6. Are you now telling me we are losing both a left turn in and a left turn out of Champion?
Correct.
Yeah.
So the only way to leave Champion next to New York Bagel is to take a right?
Correct.
It's a safety thing.
So there no longer will be a signal at Champion? There'll still be a signal, but you can only go right?
There will not be a signal at Champion. It'll be at Tucker because they're offset. You'll be a right-in, right-out, basically, onto Champion.
Well, right now, there is a signal, and you can only turn right when you have a green light. You can't turn right on red. So that's why I wanted to also know if there was, the whole signal will be eliminated at Champion?
Correct.
So you'll be able to make the right when a gap appears, it won't be controlled by a signal.
Okay, but is, okay, so my issue with making that right without a signal is if anyone that makes that right without a signal, you're kind of playing chicken there, too, because you can't really see all the way down. I understand there'll be another signal at Hathaway now.
Yeah. You have sufficient sight distance, right, fellas?
Yeah.
You check that?
Swing the traffic logic.
Pulling out of Champion?
Yeah.
To make a right? You can see back up Route 6?
Yeah, we, there will be adequate sight distance. The queues that occur here now, a lot of that's going to be cleaned up because the left turn lane is going to be, the left turn lane at Fons Corner's going to be extended. So it's really going to clean up the operations of, and the new signal that happened...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but...
Sure.
I'm going to walk right.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah.
So I can no longer make this left turn, and I can no longer make this left turn. So this is the only way I can get out. When I'm there, and I'm pulling out, and I look this way, there's no signal here. So people lie down with six. I'm kind of glad there's a signal there with a red light because it is plain chicken when you come out to make that right turn because you can't see all the way down the way the properties are now.
So you added that 10-foot bike path, which should give you more clearance to see up the street. Your sight distance should be improved.
And the new signal at Hathaway, the eastbound left turn movement, you know, if you're heading eastbound on Route 6 and you, there's going to be a left turn arrow, which is going to allow them to make the left onto Hathaway. So during that time period, you know, you'll, it will create some gaps in the westbound traffic stream on Route 6, so.
That should help.
Thank you.
My name is Ron DiPippo, D-I-P-I-P-P-O. I live in Bayview. I use Tucker Road a lot. Bob, did you do simulations of this traffic flow? My concern is really this. You have two control signals now, and it's always messed up.
Yeah.
You're going to add another control signal, which in principle might solve the problem, but probably will create more problems that you couldn't anticipate.
I have an answer for you. So the equipment we're going to put out there is state-of-the-art stuff. It's adaptive signal control. They talk to each other. They read what's going on to their adjacent signal and adjust their timing accordingly, whereas the ones out there today aren't communicating with each other that way.
Do they sense how many cars are lined up coming into it?
They kind of do, yeah. That's why we have that detection in the roadway.
You know, the disputed intersection that's not going to ever happen at Hathaway to make it a proper intersection, it's never going to happen. Because if you're not going to do it now because it's too expensive, can you imagine how much more expensive it'll be in 10, five or 10 years?
Correct.
It'll be out of the question.
Right.
So we're going to have to live with what we get now.
That's right.
I'm just concerned about the unforeseen impacts. And the simulations that you do, we have to do them. And you can only hope that these computerized, hypersensitive, you know, maybe they're artificial intelligence lights. Who do we know?
Well, we could be getting that.
Maybe that's what they are, but will solve the problem. But, you know, I don't know. I'm just concerned that you didn't make that connection with Tucker Road, because I'm afraid that this is just tinkering around the edges, and it's not really going to solve the problem.
You're very astute. And the equipment that's out, that's going to be put out there is much more efficient and better at moving traffic efficiently than what's there today. And the tools that Bob uses are much better than what was in play back when that was built. What did you use? Did you use Synchro or Vissimr?
Synchro. Yeah, but now, the other thing, this additional signal at Hathaway, that can be used to meter the amount of traffic that's coming into the Tucker Road intersection. So you can create queues and platoons on the outsides of this in order to make the queue lengths, the left turns, right turns, all those lanes work better.
You can prioritize the loads over the through traffic.
And then with the counting information, the new counting, it's constantly updating, you know, the volumes of traffic going through, making lefts, rights, throes at all these intersections.
I defer to you, a civil engineer. I'm only a mechanical engineer. But the, I want to compliment you guys on the intersection at Fons Corner and 195. You did a great job. That really works nicely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's nice to hear. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Loriann Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. And I was chair of SURPED when we did Fons Corner Road and fought for that.
Oh.
Okay, and we had to fight for that.
Yeah.
And we started fighting for this. And this project is totally not what we were fighting for. It's just not. You can do all your little fancy computerized signals and everything, and I don't see where it's going to work. Number one, have you taken into consideration the amount of traffic that will be flowing up and down Hathaway Road? Because Hathaway Road in the near future is going to have a business park, and there's going to be a tremendous amount of traffic that's going to affect that. The best thing to do would be to do that intersection at Hathaway Road and put it through. And I understand it's money, but somewhere, somehow, is money worth more than lives? And if we can't do the Tucker Road meeting Hathaway Road, then I think a safer issue would be to line up, what's the name, the street, Champion Terrace with Tucker Road. There's only one piece of property there that that would affect, so only one taking. And if you saw the number of people that came before the planning board to try and develop that piece of property with drive-throughs and you name it, and eventually someone's going to be able to come through and develop that with a drive-through, that's going to throw your project totally out the window, totally, totally gone, because the whole traffic flow is going to change. Have things like that been taken into consideration?
Yes. I just wanted to assure you, without interrupting you, that, yes, they, the designer, Bob and his team, project with the traffic. We don't design for this year or the date that it's advertised. We design for 10...
10 years.
15, 20 in the future. And I gave a glance back when you mentioned the development to make sure that they had incorporated that in their design calculations.
The development is new to us in terms of that piece of the puzzle, understanding it, but Tim made us aware that that's... it, but Tim made us aware that that's potential.
So Bob, they do an estimation of what kind of traffic that's going to generate and incorporate that into their projections?
So what type of money were we talking about taking, takings to make the lineup with Hathaway Road and Tucker Road?
You mean Champion and Tucker?
No, let's go back to Hathaway Road and Tucker, to line it up through. And I know you're going to have to take part of the medical building there, and I know you're going to have to take probably all of the businesses there.
Representative Markie, I think has the answer to your question.
But the town itself, it has property there, and that's going to be part of it, and the town was willing to do that. I just, at what point do we say, money, we can't spend money, but we'll give up lives? Because I.
Well, we're not giving up lives. This is safer design.
Well, that's what we were told about Route 6 and Fonz Corner Road, and I drive that five days a week, and I've driven it five days a week for the last 25 years.
Let's hear from Representative Markie. I think he has an answer to one of your questions.
At least I can.
Thank you very much.
I can at least try to address, I can at least.
I apologize. Oh, this one. I'm sorry, Representative.
No, that's okay. I can at least try to address what Lori has mentioned in regard to the Tucker Road lineup. I would say it would have to be eight years ago. This was kind of developing in the idea of what we were going to do with the Metro Pizza and the Karate Police and figure out, because that's the property that was going to cost a significant amount of money. As a result of policies and regulations with Massachusetts, the town would have been responsible for all takings of properties along the road, even though Route 6 is a state highway. So the town would be responsible for the whole taking of the property. The taking of that property would require not only the value of the property, but the businesses that are there, and the relocation of the businesses that are there. And I've had meetings with, at the time, Highway Commissioner Gulliver, who's actually, I left my house at 6:00 and I walked into his office at 9:00. It was a three-hour commute that day, so I can remember it distinctly. And we were discussing how creative ways we could try to find money towards the taking and then supplement it from the town. I was able to get some money from it, and at that time, I had meetings with the then-town administrator, and it was determined at that particular time that that still was not enough money to be able to satisfy the town to be able to supplement. The town wouldn't come up with that money. As a result of that, when we've had those meetings and tried to find creative ways outside of the norm, because again, you have to look at, DOT is stuck in a difficult position. We have, for example, Route 28 in the Cape, similar to Route 6, less expansive, more traffic in the summer, more businesses in the summer, and they can't, they would love to do more things and do the takings. If they took this property, everyone on Route 28 from Falmouth to Orleans would be saying to DOT, "You did this in Dartmouth. We want you to do it in our town, and we want to expand." So understand the difficulties that they are in and the precedent that they would set by committing typical money for this. So as a result, we were finding creative ways through mass development and mass works to find ways to do things, and it just wasn't enough that we could then go to the town and say, "Okay, supplement it," because it is a significant amount of money. It's in the multimillion dollars for that property. In addition, less so for the medical building. You would only deal with really the parking area for the medical building, but you are literally removing an entire building with three tenants who have been there for a long time. The value of those businesses are significant. So I say that with this in mind, that, you know, we're very conscious of the idea of safety. I think that's why we're making these adjustments. But if you look at it in a very logical way, if we get 22 cars between Tucker Road going westbound to Fonz Corner Road, you're adding another 100 feet. You're going to add, that 100 feet will add four, maybe five more cars, six more cars at that location that would allow it. And again, these signals, particularly coming westbound on Route 6, coming in from Slocombe Road, you're going to be able essentially to control and have a gate system of what's going to happen between Hathaway Road and Fonz Corner Road. And that gate system will start there with the proper signal where there is no signal. And you talk about safety, is I can remember 12 years ago or so, going by that intersection and seeing a car in a little tree in that parking lot, up like this against a tree. I'm familiar with the idea of the safety, but that into, that taking a left-hand turn is, I would not want my mother driving, taking that left-hand turn up in a northerly direction on Hathaway Road. That signal coming from the east is going to be able to control the speed of the vehicles entering into this little area of Route 6. And in addition, the area coming eastbound is going to be expanded by 100 feet wider with more opportunities and no use of a left-hand turn going into Champion. So I think in the end, you're going to see a much safer place and the congestion gone away to a degree that is acceptable to all of us, because essentially, when we get stuck behind two signal turns in Dartmouth or New Bedford, we get pretty pissed off. That's why we live here, so we can just keep going wherever we're going. So I think that this is the avenue that makes the most sense at this time, considering the value of what it would take to get that property. I know I've dragged on a little bit, but I think that's kind of sums up why we did. We made an effort to try to find some funding, and it just wasn't there.
Thanks, Representative. Yes, Gloria, please.
I have a daughter who decided she wanted to get her doctorate's degree, and she didn't want to pay for it. So she found a way to do it. She got her first and second master's degree paid for by the school. She's now going for her doctorate's degree, full scholarship, and as a matter of fact, the school's paying her $52,000 a year.
Fantastic.
So there are ways to find funds to do things. Is there COVID money available for this? Is this going to be ground-ready so that we can go after maybe COVID funds? Are there other departments that we can go after funds for? If you really, really want something, you find a way to do it. You know, my daughter found a way to do it. You find a way to do it.
I could see you're very proud of her, and with good reason. Yes, sir, please.
Stanley Mickelson. I'm talking as a resident, not a member of the board. Mr. Markie, I disagree with you a bit on this. I don't remember the town signing off when Mr. Kressman was here on that taking of that land. Maybe the state and the state decided to do it. But let's talk about today and not the past. The state of mass is flush with money. They have more money than they've ever had in the history of the state. We could tap into funds like that. Again, on the safety issue, Tucker Road, there's a police department there. This plan is not protecting my police department at all. It's jeopardizing the police department, and the safety of that department is first thing on my mind. So this preferred alternative to me is a watered-down version of what we've really had originally. It would have worked marvelously. It's not going to work. We're going to have troubles, and I can foresee it today. I'm going to be around to see the troubles, and you're probably, you might not be, but I'll send you a letter. Really, I'm serious.
I know.
Yeah, it's disturbing to me, really disturbing to me, that we had a magnificent plan that really would have worked, and it's all about a few dollars? The state of mass has umpteen billions and billions of dollars. Let's tap into that.
Thank you very much. I know that, and I don't disagree with you, that the original design would have worked great. Unfortunately, it's unattainable. It costs too much. We can't afford it. The town of Dartmouth can't afford it. Your representative tried very hard, and Mastott met him with that effort and tried very hard to find some money, and we couldn't do it. So I applaud Gloria's daughter. She sounds like an exceptional person. And there's just not enough money to build the original proposal. We think this is a very good project. It improves operations a great deal. It improves safety. It adds a bunch of pedestrian and bike accommodation that isn't there today. And I know some of the traffic movement, you know, the packaging and that sort of stuff is sort of ethereal. It sounds, you know, like BS. It's not. It works. And this signal equipment is not what's out there today. It's much better. And with, BHB is kind of legendary in the traffic design field. They're very good. And I have great faith in Bob and the people in Watertown and in Providence to come up with a design that delivers acceptable traffic operations for you here, better than what's there today and safer. That's my two cents. This gentleman, and then back to you, Chief.
Good evening. My name is Rado Gafitano, G-A-F-I-T-A-N-U. I live on Chase Road, so I'm taking this from the other end, from people going eastward. I agree with Mrs. Miller and with Stanley. Thank you for the insight that he brought about making it happen. Can you put that back up? Is it correct to assume that you don't live in the area?
I do not live in the area, sir, no.
Okay. So I'm coming up Chase Road. That intersection was showing there on the TV is part of my life, and I don't like it at all. It's part of my life every day, four, five, six times, I have to drive through that, trying to come from home at rush hour to go up Fonz Corner Road towards I-195 is a nightmare, and I'm having high blood pressure every time. I do not get to cross. I do not get to drive because of cars stacking up, making the left turn to go onto Highway 6. I agree with Stanley, what he said, and it appears from you that you put a big cross on that original plan that I saw about eight, nine years ago on the website, on the town's website, and I was looking, as Stanley mentioned, this is great. This looks like some people put some brain into it. So what happened? Because everybody, Mrs. Miller says that you can make it happen. Stanley says there is money. We can make it happen. But you were coming back and say, "No, it's done." Put a cross on it. You want to put another stoplight over there at Hathaway? In the span of what's there, 200 feet?
Actually, 500 feet, sir, from Tucker to Hathaway Road.
In that span, 500 feet, so we're going to have three stoplights?
No, you're going to have three stoplights. They talk about the existing signal at Fonz Corner Mall Road, Old Westport Road, and State Road.
Correct, yeah.
You'll have a light at Tucker Road and State Road, and you'll have a light at State Road and Hathaway Road. Those are the three lights that we're talking about.
As I said, we live with that mess over there every day, all year long. So instead of, and you're promising right now, it's this new system that is going to be better. Why don't you prove you can fix it as it is right now? Try to get rid of that mess of two lanes coming from Fonz Corner Mall Road and making a left turn into Highway 6, and always be in that intersection at rush hour. You simply cannot. I understand what you said, and initially, what you explained, how you're going to lengthen the lanes, how you're going to do that, I get that. I honestly don't think it's sufficient. It's not going to solve, and now you're going to put another stoplight, the third one, to segregate and to make it even more intermittent than what it is right now.
Yeah, real quick, when you make this dual left turn off of Fonz.
Yes.
Onto Route 6 eastbound, there's no place to go because these cars back up. The right turn lane is blocked, and it spills back into the through lane. The, you know, and the storage is not long enough. So we're adding, you know, two lanes, 100 feet, plus the right turn lane, another 100 feet. So that's three lanes, 100 feet. If you talk about five cars each lane, that's 15 more vehicles that you can stack in this area. Also, I talked about the clearance time at the signal that you need to get a car from the existing stop bar today, that 100 feet plus the width of the intersection. That takes away from time that could be reallocated to Tucker Road, to this westbound left turn movement. So, and also the elimination of that left turn movement, too. So all that time can be reallocated to Route 6 so that you have more time at that intersection.
More throughput.
Or through, more vehicles are going to be able to go through on Route 6. So the intersection of Hathaway is not currently signalized, and this left turn pocket spills back, and it blocks the through lane. So you can't get two lanes of traffic going through there. You only, it's neck down to one lane, so your capacity of that is cut in half. So what will happen here is those left turns will be signalized. They won't have to make the risky left turn move across westbound traffic. I get it, that this is not what you envisioned, and this is not the perfect solution, but it is going to improve traffic from what you see out there today.
What about the other one at Fonz Corner Mall Road? All these three traffic lights are going to be changed to new, improved, synchronized, automatic, computerized, and all of that, all three of them?
We have, yes.
So it's a combination of improvements where we can. We can't afford.
Sorry to interrupt, but do you have any proof as, have you run some simulations with these and that you can present?
What we look at is, we look at the 85th percentile queue, like 85% of the time, how long is that queue going to be? And what we've done on, for example, this westbound approach, this left turn lane goes all the way from Champion Terrace on the screen here, all the way to Fonz Corner Road. So we've increased the length of that, you know.
Do you have a level of service graphic you can show us, like what it is today versus what it's going to be?
No, the biggest thing now is that that level of service graphic, it doesn't correctly show existing conditions, because like I said, those queues spill back and impede the flow of throughput traffic on Route 6. By having adequate storage lanes for those vehicles to stack in, you're freeing up a whole nother lane of traffic on Route 6. So you're neck down to one lane, eastbound and westbound at some points here, because you have the queues spilling back into the through lanes.
I understand what you're saying, and the one that you were just showing to make a left down on Old Westport Road, that's the one I'm using to get home. So I'm very well aware, if you want me, since I'm getting in that intersection every day from every possible direction and so on, the one that is of most concern is the one at Fonz Corner Mall Road and Highway 6 that needs to be fixed somehow, synchronized those stoplights, do something about them. Because, and what you're saying, that cars stack up. Well, what happens at that intersection that I'm talking about, those cars stacking up, right now, they are in conflict with the traffic laws. they are in conflict with the traffic laws. Because they may have started getting into the intersection while it was green. They have to stop, and now it's red, and there's a problem. We had the police sometimes go in there, but I have to say, look, I was on green. Why am I getting a ticket now? Because it became red. So it's not, we have to fix it, or you have to fix it somehow in there.
These are all great observations. And that's why we're here tonight, to hear this stuff, to find out. Because nobody knows the project limits better than you. You guys drive it every day. You experience the pain and suffering, getting from one end to the other. All I can say is that the design will make improvements. It'll be better than it is today. It'll be safer than it is today. And more types of users can use it. We've got bikes out there. We have better bike accommodation, better pedestrian accommodation, and better vehicular operation. It's not the original version, which probably would have been better, but it's just unaffordable. And I know Massachusetts is doing great, and I applaud all our elected officials for making it that way. But we don't have enough money to do this.
Now, the question was very specific to the representative, as in, okay, were we 20% of what we need, 80% of what we need, 50% of what we need?
Let the representative say. We've got to get everybody talking as well.
I got about $1 million. I went and I had a conversation with Mr. Kressman. And when I spoke with him and asked him about the town's contribution, there was a big no. Okay? The idea that I would get up here and lie is hogwash. Okay? I tried many different ways from many different outlets to get money to supplement something that the state wouldn't do. But the town did not want to do it back then. As a result of that, they needed to come up with something new. This is what they have come up with, because the town didn't want to do that back then. Now, the town may have changed minds, and we may have had money at different times. But it was never readdressed to a point where this was a priority to get this done under that. So the idea that somehow the state has all this money, the town, or the state has all COVID money, and all of this, there's also appropriate appropriations for all these things, just as there is with the town, just as there is with the school department. Those appropriations have limitations on what you can do and how you can use them. Okay? Don't think that somehow this was not something that we all collectively thought about when this was designed back in, what was it, 2014, and it was discussed. So this is where we are now because of a decision made by people who aren't even in this room eight years ago.
One of the reasons it's taken this long to get this far is because we spent an awful lot of time trying to get the money.
We worked closely with Representative Markey, with the town. As you can see, in 2014, the project that had the relocation of Tucker Road was at 25% design. And at that time, Representative Markey and others were, you know, able to find some money to assist the community to pay for the relocation of a municipal road, which Tucker Road is a municipal road. So that is appropriate for municipal funds. And there was some money to supplement that, but there wasn't enough. And at that time, the town would not commit to fund that. And we worked with the town, worked through that for many, many years, and there was no progress. So at, you know, a number of years later, and we all know how Font's Corner Road and Tucker Road and that whole area, it's, there's so much congestion, and all the other work had been done, and this was really a bottleneck. Nothing was done for many years. We tried to work at that original project, and it wasn't progressing. So that's how we ended up where we are now. We wanted to make some improvements, a better improvement than what's there now. But, and the design as it is now accommodates, if the town ever chooses to relocate Tucker Road, it can be done. There were also a number of environmental issues. So it's not like we didn't try, and we've been trying for nine years. And there was no progress. So we wanted to make an improvement because there is such a problem. And there's a problem coming out of Hathaway Road, and people flying down Route 6, heading west, down the hill, going too fast, and people trying to get out of Hathaway Road. And it's very difficult, or getting in. So this is the best we could do at this time. But unless there are many millions of dollars that the town would commit for the relocation, we can't really move ahead with anything else. And if that were done, this right now is programmed in, it will be programmed in federal fiscal year 2025, which is, we're almost done with '23, so.
It's not that far away.
It's not that far away.
Officer, you had your hand up. Would you like to speak? Is that the chief?
Hey, doing? Officer Canario, Steve Canario, from the Traffic Division in Dartmouth. I'm the Town Safety Officer. Everyone complains about this intersection. It's my phone, let you call. Nice to meet all of you. I've been getting millions of phone calls about that intersection. No one in this room has probably studied that intersection more than me. I started the first 11 years of my career patrol in that area, and then I got blessed with traffic dealing with all the complaints for that area. I agree with these people. Nothing is going to be as good as the four-way intersection. There's just, let's just, I'm not even going to beat that horse. We know that would be the ultimate thing. If money's not an issue, if money is an issue, that's fine. There's other things. If you could bring that back up, I'd appreciate it, because there's some things I wanted to point out. Like I said, I know you guys do your studying. I do real, live studying. Anyone that's seen the police officers sitting there in the mobile gas station, I'm one of them. I've spent hours out there, based on complaints. Because we don't want to just go out there and punish people with tickets if it's not truly their fault. And I agree with some of the people. We've changed the police dynamic of how we address violations there. We look more at the people that are failing to stop for the yellows and reds, because contrary to what most people believe, yellow light means, what? Stop if it's safe to do so, not speed up and get stuck in the intersection. We really don't target people that are blocking it if they got stuck there. We watch the light. If it's yellow, red, you go through, you're going to get a ticket. We're trying to do that to make it fair to the people, because it is a problem intersection. If it's just how people drove, then many other intersections in town would be blocked as well, and they're not. All this other stuff that's being discussed is going to be a benefit. I understand that. But the meat and potatoes is Font's Corner merging onto State Road, period. Everything else is irrelevant. It's all going to help. That's great, you know? The right turn onto Tucker Road, I don't know if you've spent any time out there, that is absolutely not a 0, 1% block issue whatsoever. I don't even know how that came on your radar. Someone didn't do their homework. That's not an issue. As a matter of fact, we try to promote people to get into that, break down parking lane, to eliminate blocking the intersection. Get out of the way. Move out of the way, where the ANA jewelers is. Get out of the way, move out of the way. Stop blocking the intersection. Biggest question we have from the traffic unit studying this intersection is why, why has it never been addressed as to why we have three lanes going westbound where we don't have an issue, and we still, in this plan, only have two lanes heading east? Why can't we shift that? You've got a dedicated lane going into the mall. The malls aren't like they were in the 80s. We have very few cars even use that. You have a dead lane going straight into the mall. For what? It's a waste of space. Personally, from a traffic standpoint, if you want to see that flow better, we've studied and looked at it and said, boy, it would be great if they could shift this over and give you three lanes going east where we need it, and two coming west. Because even if west did back up, it's not going to obstruct anything like Font's Corner Road is. It would give you a whole nother lane of traffic. Just food for thought. Those other lanes, the left onto, the westbound turn, the left on the west, it does back up at times. My phone doesn't ring about that. That's rare. My phone doesn't ring about that. I know the facts of when I get the complaints. And if I had a dollar for every complaint that I had for someone blocking Font's Corner and Old Westport, I could retire today. That's the problem. So I really, really, if something's going to be done, I really want to see that fixed. I really want to see that. And I'm moving it up. It's going to bring the stacking lane up. That will help. It's definitely going to help. But I would hate to see you put shovels in the ground without entertaining the option of flipping that so you have more lanes going eastbound.
So I want to ask you and Bob a question. If we did that, would we then create a problem going westbound?
Where would the problem be? Going up the hill? I mean, it's not going to block an intersection. If someone's going to be backed up, I'd rather it not block an intersection.
Sure, yeah. Did you look at the volumes and... Did we look at that to see?
I mean, you guys are engineers. I'm a blue collar cop, so I'm not telling you how to do your job.
Nobody knows the traffic better than you out there.
I sit out there and see it, and I, you know, I never get a complaint about cars going westbound. But yet we have three lanes. If you go out there and look, you're going to see that there's a lane that just goes straight.
I do want to assure you, they are out there looking. They take counts. When was the last time you took counts? Two, three years ago?
Yeah.
And we did our traffic counts, and then we also looked at pre-COVID, because COVID, as you know, affected traffic volumes a lot.
Everyone's got a heavy right foot, definitely.
Traffic pattern, yeah. Speeds went up. So two things that are going to happen here. The traffic signal at Hathaway is going to have an advanced phase, where, advanced eastbound phase. So you're going to have more time allocated to the eastbound movement, whereas that blocks, that lane spills back and it blocks one of the through lanes.
Absolutely. At the heaviest time of the day, it does break it down, like he said, and brings it to one lane going eastbound, yeah.
Right. And back at Tucker, you know, there's going to be reduced loss time there because of, you're going to be able to allocate more time to Route 6, eastbound and westbound, because you don't have that confusion on the Tucker, you know, when people hesitate, they don't know if somebody across the way is going to...
Nope. You're right, but...
But we can look at...
Again, that's not, that's nuisance issues. That's not really, that's not contributing to people blocking the intersection that everybody in this room is about. Everybody here, I guarantee you, is here because of that intersection being blocked.
Yeah, this dual left turn that you make off of Font's, there's no place for those cars to go.
There isn't. There isn't. So that's why I'm trying to say, how can we get more, more, more? Because this is all we're going to get. So I'd like to see it done. I am with the Champion Terrace right turn. I will state, I hope you're looking at addressing the U-turn issues at Old Westport, because you have a free-flowing right turn coming off Old Westport. And with people making U-turns, I can already see the recipe there. So I hope that's being looked at. It hasn't been mentioned, but being professionals, I hope, I'm sure you looked at that to some degree, and some modification would be there, because I know that's going to cause a lot of vehicle conflict with...
Yeah. This is great observations. Thank you. Appreciate you speaking.
I just hope you, just take a peek at that, you know, adding that extra lane would, that would be the next step, in our opinion, to having the four-way intersection at Hathaway.
Thank you very much, officer. Yes, sir. And then that gentleman in the back.
I'm still Rhonda Pippen. Apropos the officer's very good comments. I'm reminded of Yogi Berra telling his players, you can observe a lot just by watching.
It's true.
Obviously, he's observed a lot.
He has.
I have a simple suggestion here. If Bob is so sure that lengthening that lane coming up to the Tucker is a big deal, why don't you get some paint and go do it tomorrow? It looks to me like that's just the painting on the road.
We move the curb lines around.
There's a median, there's a median down the center here, too, on this. If you just put paint out there, you're going to still have people making that movement.
Well, you put, the stop line is here. People will move to the stop line.
Yeah, there's going to be, there's going to be a median, a barrier in the middle of these two directions of traffic that's going to prohibit them from making that movement. So right now, if you just put paint out there, people are going to make the left turn movement anyway.
What left turn movement? Going eastbound?
Yeah, go eastbound into Champion Terrace. They're going to make that left turn movement.
Not if you put, not if you paint it all up and you put a, you don't have to put a solid barrier or anything. You can put just a couple of poles.
Trust me on that.
All it takes is educating the drivers that you can't do that anymore.
I understand what you're trying to say. The reason why that would not be functional is because if they move that stop line as it is, you couldn't see the traffic lights. I'd already thought of that. We are too far forward to see the traffic lights, would be a problem.
Good observation.
How about the gentleman in the back? You've had your hand up for a while. Thank you.
Hello, Brad Gifford, G-I-F-F-O-R-D. I've studied this intersection quite a bit. One of my concerns is, I feel it's unfair for traffic coming off of Champion Terrace. They can't take a left, no vehicles. Where are those vehicles going to go? And how do they go east? So that's one thing. The other thing is, for 10 years, or nine years, you've been doing this, I was here at a meeting once before. They had the traffic, computerized traffic model. And I said, at that time, can you switch the lights, the circuitry, on the computer model to see what the flow would be like? They said, yes. That was it.
Well, they can't do it on the fly.
That was it. So where is the peak, the peak traffic flow coming, peak hours, where are the heaviest traffic flows? In my opinion, it's Font's Corner Road going east, and Route 6 going east. Now, you have the traffic light, you have east, westbound going east, and then that's a heavy flow. Then the very next signal is Font's Corner Road, which is the second heaviest flow going east. So you have a backup. Why have you never switched, like going from Old Westport Road to having that one go after the westbound, have Old Westport Road going, and then have Font's Corner Road going? Why had that never been done?
I'm going to have to defer to Bob again. He's our traffic expert. You're talking about signal timing and phasing, and that's the man who can answer our questions.
I can generally answer them. I know we did actually ask VHB to look at the existing, you're talking existing conditions, and they evaluated the signals. There were some refinements, not exactly what you're talking about, but they were optimized as best as possible. But I think one of the biggest problems right now is the Font's Corner Road signal doesn't talk to the Tucker Road signal, because the Tucker Road signal is so old, and then Hathaway backs up because people can't take a left, you know? And that just all backs up, and then it backs up into Font's Corner Road, and Tucker and Font's Corner don't...
I get they don't talk.
Right.
But if you mechanically changed it...
Yeah.
I know we did some...
We'd be in a lot better position.
Yeah, we did some refinements. I don't have the exact details on that, but I know there were, you know, some...
People went up into the cabinet and the rest of it.
Yeah. But if the signals aren't talking to each other, you have them randomly, you know, going on and off. So you have, you have the dual left coming down Font's Corner, making the movement into a red signal. Whereas if the signals are talking to each other, they're going to, the signal at Tucker Road is going to be green for them to come around the corner and go through that signal. So they're not going to be coming into a congested stop condition. So that's the benefit that's going to happen out here when you get the signals talking to each other.
I just feel that if you had switched those, flip-flopped Old Westport Road and Font's Corner Road years ago, there has to be a way where you could do that. And even, it's not too late, because we still, we're two or three years out yet. It's not too late to do that.
And we can look at that, because one obviously has to go before the other. So we can look at that. But the biggest issue is that signals aren't talking to each other, and the dual left is coming into a stop condition, because the other signal's red.
And like the other... We can look at re-timing out there in the interim between now and this project getting built out. We can take a look at the cabinets and see what the timing is, and Bob can study your idea and see if the model's all right.
I think it would solve a big part of the problem. And adding another light, I don't know. I know they talk, but... And adding another light, I don't know. I know they talk, but...
Yes, sir. Thanks for your comment.
Richard Aruder again. I have a couple of questions. One is, is there still going to be a right turn on Red Hathaway Road heading south at Route 6?
Yeah, we're looking at that, and we're also looking at, uh, an overlap. Whereas when, when you have a, the left turn onto Hathaway, that the right could occur at the same time as, as that, and it could be signalized.
So one of the problems is that if you're heading eastbound and you kept the Reed Road, you get to Hathaway Road now. If you take a U-turn, I would assume that you're still going to allow U-turns there. Allow U-turn, and there's right turn on Red and Hathaway, is that interaction?
Yep.
Right? So that's, that's a problem now, never mind even without stoplight. So that's one thing. So have you addressed that?
Yeah, so we may, we may end up putting a no right turn on Red for that situation.
Okay.
Based on the volumes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So that's one. And then the next one is, I agree with the resident of Champion Terrace, because I've obviously come out of that fire station for a long time. And that, that road, when you, when you come up to the end of Champion Terrace, there's a lot of stuff in the street right now. There's a lot of poles, there's a lot of things there, and the road bends. You really can't see past up to the fire station line of sight. Is there a way that you could show the residents of Champion Terrace in some computerized format what that would look like in the future? When you said that you were going to add a bike lane that's going to give you greater vision? Because I agree with her statement that it is a dangerous intersection trying to come out. Is that something that could be provided to us?
Yeah, we could, we can get VHB to work up a graphic to demonstrate that.
I think the people in Champion Terrace should be comfortable that they'd be able to enter the roadway.
Yeah. Because that's a, that's a metric that we require them to check at all intersection site distance.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a difficult spot right now, I'll tell you. The other thing is, I do have another, the same question, actually, on the left turn. Heading eastbound at Champion Terrace at that light, the residents will be able to take a left turn to go into Champion Terrace if they're heading east, correct?
They will not be.
No.
No, they'll have to come up and make the U-turn at, at the new signal at Hathaway. And again, the, the signal, the new signal at Hathaway is going to create some gaps in the westbound traffic to allow vehicles to make that right turn out of, out of Champion Terrace.
And the left signal would be, is no closing traffic, so they can get in and turn around.
Right. Okay.
All right. So the residents would have to wait at that light, go up to Hathaway Road, take the U-turn at Hathaway Road. Hopefully, you fix the...
The no right turn on Red.
Right turn on Red.
And then, and then...
Then they'll come back.
Similarly, when they're coming out of Champion Terrace, they would take the right turn and make the U-turn at Fontz Corner.
But they'll, they'll take the U-turn at Hathaway Road, turn around, hit, hit another set of lights, hit the lights at... No, because the light won't be there, right?
Yeah, the light would be at the corner.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am. Oh, sir. Yeah, you, I apologize. You, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
All right. Susan Guiducci, G.U.I.D.U.C.C.I. When you're heading south on Hathaway Road, coming into Route 6, is that going to be a one lane or a two lane? It's currently, it's currently one, but...
It'll be two lanes.
Okay. Well, I was just going to say that that would be more helpful, because typically, when I come down that road, I have to make the left onto Tucker to get to where I live. And if you wait in line for people who are making a right and then heading west on Route 6, it's so much easier to just shift into the, towards the center line and take the right, knowing that I have to get into that turning lane at Tucker Road. And that gives you, certainly gives you more time. So having a two lane there to be able to do that would be helpful, and it would alleviate some of the traffic that's heading back up Hathaway Road. That was my only comment.
That's a good question. Thank you. Yes, way in the back.
Sean McDonald, just like the fries, but without the money. Been a resident in this town since 1969, living on Route 6. Moved to Reed Road. So I've been traveling from home on Route 6 to work, to work, and back on Route 6. My mother lives on Route 6. That's where our office is. So I'm on Route 6 four, five, six times during the course of the day, five days a week. Basically, I've earned my Road Warrior stripes on Route 6. Also a member of the Select Board. I'm here as a private citizen. I do not recall the town ever agreeing to just go with this plan. I do recall the amount of money being bandied about as to the cost of what the land taking would be. But I don't recall agreeing, as a gentleman from VHB had said, that the town had agreed to, to this particular plan. I don't agree with that. I don't remember that. I've been a member of this board since 2010. That never came before this board to say, "Yes, that's fine. That's planned." One of the questions I was going to ask is whether or not anybody who is with designing this plan actually lives here, but it's quite evident that you don't. We live here. We understand and value the engineering, the brain trust that goes into designing roads. We appreciate that. But we drive it. And you can do all the engineering you want. You can try to say the road makes safer. But the one thing that you cannot do is dictate how people drive. When you are in this traffic, and the road does clog at Fontz Corner Road or Old Westport Road, State Road, you see gaps of the cars in the queue. Not everybody is bumper-to-bumper. You'll see sometimes one, two, three, four cars gapped. That creates the problem. The gentleman had suggested whether or not the timing of the lights at Old Westport Road, Fontz Corner Mall Road, Route 6 can be changed. Yeah, you could change. You can have the westbound and northbound from Old Westport Road, and then followed by the eastbound, southbound from Fontz Corner Mall Road. Traffic will still back up for the people trying to turn left on Old, on Old Westport Road to go to Old Westport Road from Route 6. That's going to happen, because sometimes that light, it takes two times, sometimes three times, to do that. Again, that's driver habit, driving habits. Without the Tucker Road relocation, this doesn't make sense. There are four ways, north and south, in this town. There's only four ways to go from the northern part of town to the southern part of town. But almost every single road crosses State Road. State Road is probably one of the busiest roads, and VHB, I know, has their offices in Providence. This is akin to Mineral Spring Avenue. This is akin to Reservoir Avenue. Post Road. This is our post road. You have the Nubeford Industrial Area or the Whaling City Golf Course. That's going to be bringing more traffic down into this area, because this is where people are going to want to go to lunch. This is where they're going to want to shop. This is where they might want to take off. Most of us here, who live here, especially those north of this area, Reed Road and whatnot, know during the Christmas time that it's much easier to take the highway, to go to 140 to get to the southern part of town than to go through this area. Another part of the disturbing to me, as somebody who drives this, but more importantly, as somebody who sits here, is the lack of ability of the people on Championship Terrace to try and get out of there. There could be, and I know this is still in the design phase, if you reduce that median, where you're going to have it at Tucker Road, reduce it to allow a separate light for Championship Terrace to take that left turn lane. Because now, somebody who wants to come, somebody who wants to go to Stevens, or somebody who lives in that area wants to leave, and they got to go to Stang, or they got to go somewhere, they're going to have to come out, take a right, try and take a U-turn at Old Westport Road, head back the other way, and say if they're coming out of Tucker, say if they got to go to Tucker Road. Okay? Now they want to go home, they're going to have to take a right, pull another U-turn. We're going to have U-turn, we're going to have U-turn warriors living on Championship Terrace, and it's making it much more difficult for them. There's no reason why there cannot be a left turn light at Championship Terrace to allow these people who live there to make that turn to go where they need to go. Back in 2014, the estimate for the land taking was about $2.5 million. Well, we all know what the prices are today, so we're probably looking at four to five. The town could have started sucking away some money here and there, but they didn't. To be honest with you, I don't recall that conversation at all in sitting here, at all. So whether or not the conversation was made by staff or from others, I have no idea. But it never came across what, it never came across my desk, and I really don't have a desk, but it never came across my, my purview. The suggestion, though, from Officer Canario about that third lane on the westbound side is a great idea. Moving that median over to allow three lanes on the eastbound side is a brilliant idea. Because right now, most of us who drive that know that that lane is either used for 50% to go into the mall or to beat the traffic in the other lane to go ahead, ahead of everybody else. And more than likely, that's exactly what happens. That's exactly what happens. So anybody who travels, anybody who travels this road on a daily basis knows exactly what's going on. And they see this, and it's just not the right thing. I understand the money issue of it. Everybody understands the money issue of it. They want something that works. They want something that makes it a little bit easier. But we all know that it's going to take time and basically learning how to drive that makes it a lot easier. Because we know there are knuckleheads out there, and it's the knuckleheads that cause the problems. So I, I, I think you should rethink, take into consideration Officer Canario's suggestion. I, I think you should rethink the Championship Terrace set of lights. Definitely do a little bit more on the Hathaway Road. That, to be honest with you, that needs to be addressed a little bit more. You need to have three lanes there. You need to have a right turn, a right turn lane, a left turn, two right turn lanes and a left turn lane. You, that's what's needed the most there. And it needs to be no turn on Red. Eventually, somebody will turn on Red, because that's just driver habit. But at least if it's said there, and there's no, and there's enough signage and, you know...
I'd like to ask Bob, I hate to put you on the spot, but that's your job. I'd like to ask specifically about the signal at Champion Terrace and why we didn't go that way. There were lots of other things you asked about, but I want to hear that one.
Well, that's what the transcripts are supposed to be.
That's right. And we've already committed to taking a look at what would happen if we added a third lane going eastbound.
If, if you were to allow the left turn onto Champion Terrace, your stacking between Fontz Corner and Champion Terrace would still be inadequate to, to queue all the, all the vehicles. Because on this, this plan, we've moved the stop bar up over 100 feet.
How many people are making that turn?
I think you misunderstood me. I'm not talking about, sorry, I'm not talking about the left turn here. I'm talking about the left turn here.
Left turn.
This is where the majority of the people come. If you move this back and have this as sequence one, this is sequence two. Anybody who has lived here and lived here, they're left turn warriors. They know exactly what to do. So somebody coming out here to make the left-hand turn already is starting to come to this point. They don't, you know, they don't do this. They do this.
So why, let, let Bob explain.
Again, the, the stop line, the stop line wouldn't be located where we show it on this plan.
You'd have to move it west.
You'd have to move it west 100 feet to accommodate that left turn movement.
And then you lose the queue.
The queue. So then, then the biggest, one of the biggest problems is that dual left turn from Fontz Corner onto Route 6 eastbound.
And as difficult as it is for the people who live on Champion, that isn't a heavy move, right? There's not a lot of people making that turn.
Morning peak, there's 12 versus, you know, you have like, like 2,200 vehicles on the main line. You have 12 vehicles versus 2,200 on the main line.
It's a balance of pain.
Right, I understand that, but as, as that is drawn right now, people taking a left off of Champion Terrace is going to totally avoid that queue. Because that's the way they're driving now. That's, when I go, believe it or not, I go to the hairdressers. When I go there and I'm leaving and I'm the first one out there, I'm taking that immediate left. My signal is on, so, but anybody who's had the experience in that intersection knows that I'm not going to do...
I can't ask...
That left turn that way.
We can't, we can't put that out in the...
And then the other question is, like, what if somebody's coming across from Tucker to Champion Terrace while you're making that movement?
If that's a separate light on Tucker Road and then another light on Champion, you totally avoid that.
Two separate lights there?
Two separate.
Then you're going to be...
No, two separate sequences.
Yeah, then you're going to have less time, then you're going to have less time for Route 6, and Route 6 is going to back up even further.
So that's part of his magic. That's, that's what he does is...
But if you put that third lane on the eastbound side, take away that third lane on the westbound side, then you have enough queue. Thank you.
Of course, finding the room for that third lane is, is another issue. Take it away from the westbound.
But the westbound volumes are actually higher than the...
So then we create the problem on the west, but we will study it.
Like you said, it's back up next to the ball.
Promise you an analysis, and we'll give it to you.
Then it's backed up next to the ball.
Well, we got to talk one at a time. We've been doing great so far, and I know there's a lot of stuff to talk about. This lady would like to speak. Yep.
I'm losing two ways in and out of that street. I'm going to have to do, to get back home, would have to make two U-turns, which can also be dangerous and less safe.
That's true.
I definitely would like that looked at some more.
Yep.
And not to lose access out of there in two different, or lose it, access in and access out. And definitely, I'm glad it was pointed out when I, well, to make the turn on, on, not on Red, but to make that right turn, you have to see around the fire station. Like, all that should be taken into consideration.
We got to look at that, too. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That's what I was saying. Jeez, we're only...
A little lighter note. Sandra Medeiros, M.E.D.E.I.R.O.S. I'm the Bicycle Path Champion in town. I'm with the South Coast Bike Way and the Dartmouth Pathways Committee. Is there any way to see a, a close visual of the side path? Do you have any images?
I do not, from that point of view. I have plans we can show you. It's typically 10 feet wide. You know, there are driveways, so they'll have their development. So it'll be cut down to about eight feet when you have that driveway development. But it'll run from Fontz Corner Mall Road. It continues out to our project limits, which is, you know, center of the golf course here on the screen. And on the north side, it goes from Fontz Corner over to Hathaway Road.
So the ramp, the driveway ramp is what...
Basically, the white, it's very hard for you guys to see, but it's the white lines on the top and bottom of the roadway.
Okay.
Is where the side path would be.
One of the areas that was discussed a lot was the Champion Terrace entrance, and there's the Veterans Home there. And the sidewalk is very narrow. Is that road shifting a little bit there? Is that road shifting a little bit there, the width? It to accommodate the side path? I don't see 10 feet when I ride my bike there on the sidewalk, because that's the only safe spot. It's very narrow, you have to avoid telephone poles and brick walls and utility boxes, all kinds of fun stuff.
We're gonna clean all that up.
Right.
Thank you.
The walls on the north side were basically holding that edge and moving out. So, the lanes today are roughly 12 feet wide. The travel lanes will be 11 feet wide, so we'll stab that 10-foot path as much as possible. So, in front of the, the home there, it'll change, and you'll see the crosswalk shifts, not across the intersection, but on the east side of Tucker Road.
Okay, and so, near Midas and the, the remaking of the bridge, is the, is the road width wider where the new bridge is going? Are you taking land there near Midas?
We don't take land, we hold that edge. The median is wide, and it'll, it'll shrink.
Okay.
So, everything sort of moves, a footprint sort of stage, you know, the jeweler on the other side, we have to maintain that, so that they have access to their front door. So, we were stuck with our width, excuse me, so there's certain areas where, I call it a pinch point, like at a driveway, where the path will be shrunk a little bit.
And are some of the lanes in this whole area reduced from what they are now for traffic coming to, and, and also to, to, to gain the width, to gain the side path, but also to, to slow down traffic?
It will help, yes.
And what is the eastern, uh, limits for this project? Is it where all those, those four stripes are to the right?
Yeah, you, you basically end, um, with the old busters and the car dealership, you're just basically right there.
Okay, so, then that's, the side path will just end there?
For right now, yeah. The department has a project in mind to go forward and run out to New Bedford.
Okay, and same on Hathaway Road to connect to, I think I saw that on the tip coming up, Route 6 to the New Bedford line on Hathaway Road, is on the...
There is a project that was initiated. The design is about to commence. It's not programmed for advertising yet. But it will go from the end of this project on the east side through Slocombe, through the Slocombe Street intersection, and then end at the Dartmouth-New Bedford City Town Line.
Very good. Well, I, I have faith that the signaling will help, so I'll wait and see. Thank you.
Thanks. Good, good comments and questions. We've been doing this for two hours. Do you wanna go, anybody else? Anybody wanna go again? New thoughts? Hey, I know it's been a struggle, and you've been super patient with us, and, and with our equipment failures and what have you, and I know it's not your ideal project. You've given us lots of homework, and I promise you, we will do that homework, and we'll come back and explain what we learned. So, we wanna investigate eastbound, widening the eastbound, taking it from the westbound. We wanna look at maybe signalizing somehow Champion, tying it to the signal at Tucker, so that we don't have conflicting movements.
Sight distance off Champion.
Sight distance off Champion, sight distance at the fire station.
U-turns.
U-turns. Make double sure, look at the U-turn movements and make sure they're safe.
Honestly, because it doesn't matter whether it's red, green, blue, purple. Somebody is ultimately gonna make that U-turn illegal.
Right.
And that's where accidents, I mean, I've come off of Hathaway Road many a times and come this close to being hit by somebody.
Right.
Just because they're turning because they think...
It's so congested, and people have to wait so long, they get, they lose their patience, and they do something stupid, yeah.
Signage is not gonna stop people from doing things.
No. I'm sure the officer has a heck of a tough job out there.
I see you there all the time.
Real high volume.
If it doesn't work, I could stay home.
Yes. Well, I, I just wanna thank you all again. Appreciate all your comments. We've learned a lot. Hopefully, you've learned a lot. You've given us some good assignments to work on and see if we can improve this further. I wanna thank Representative Markey, too. He, he came and spoke up and helped us out a lot. And the town of Dartmouth for getting us up and running here. We really appreciate it. So, without further ado, let's, let's call it at 8 o'clock tonight. We'll formally end this hearing at 8:00 PM. Thank you.